All right, here we go. This meeting of the Mala Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID is 824-1033-7379 and the required password is 670407. I call this meeting to order. We need roll call, please. Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Davin Araro.
Here.
Mr. Copley. Mr. DeSilva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes. Mr. Jansen.
Here.
Mr. Kismarski.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda. This meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mala Board of Education will meet on March 5th, 2025 in the Administrative Offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mala, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Mr. Denise, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
Special Legionists of the United States of America, and to the Republic before which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to require an executive session in the beginning this evening. So I need a motion to recess. Mr. DeSilva, second by Mr. Kismarski. We should be about 30 minutes at the most. Thank you very much. All right, I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Kismarski, second by Mr. DeSilva. All right, agenda questions. Please tell me your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your comments to no longer than three minutes. This section called participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Gallo, we are officially open to the public. All right, seeing no one coming forward.
Is it the, sorry, excuse me, is this only on the agenda items?
Correct.
Correct, so we're gonna wait till the end.
All right, thank you. So, seeing no one coming forward at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Denise. Our Mawa student representative report this evening.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Oh, is it you?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Um, so tonight, the boys' basketball team is playing in the semifinals at Glen Rock, actually right now. Also, this weekend, on Saturday, Winter Guard will be competing at Bridgewater, Raritan High School, and Robotics will be competing at Mount Olive High School. This week, Decca is at States at Atlantic City. They left yesterday, and I believe they're returning tomorrow. Also in Atlantic City, on Thursday and Friday, Ava Novello will be competing in the Wrestling State Championship at Boardwalk Hall, so we wish everyone there good luck. The band Indoor Percussion won second place at Old Bridge High School on Saturday with a score of 70.79. And for art, the Relationships Art Exhibit organized by the Art Club and curated by senior Colette Lido is now open and on view in the T3 Gallery. And lastly, the Drama Club is continuing rehearsals for the spring play, Anything Goes, and that will open on Thursday, March 27th, and it runs through to that Sunday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Dr. Jatoro, our superintendent's report this evening.
All right, I'll start with something different because that my stuff was just taken.
Now he knows how it feels. Now, now he know how it feels.
She didn't know, she did it better anyway, she did it better than me. Okay, so for all those who don't know, allow me a moment just to explain the report that's coming up. This is the Student Safety Data System report, and it collects two types of information from schools to the district. The two types of information are incidents of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, or bullying, weapons offenses, substance offenses, and any other incident leading to student removal from the school, and it also includes HIV training and programs that are provided throughout the school year. This information is collected to fulfill the state and federal reporting requirements as well as to the District Board of Education, law enforcement, and the state through the SSDS system. The Public School Safety Law states that all acts of violence, vandalism, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying must be reported to the Board of Education. And if you all recall, this happens twice a year, so I'll be reporting on the first reporting period, which is July 1st to December 31st. So on the first slide, you'll see the breakdown of all the schools. Those are the incidences that have to be reported, broken down by all the different subcategories throughout the school. Give you a minute to take a look. Then on the next slide, it breaks down the types of trainings and programs that are housed within the school that took place during that period. These are not best and final, as I said before, there's two periods to report. Just to explain to you the types of trainings, we have a laundry list of trainings, but just some that I would like to share with the board. Obviously, each year we have HIV Policy Intervention and Prevention Training. We have Conflict Resolution Training, Cyberbullying Training, Threat Assessment Training, and School Safety Team Training, along with other programs that are running to really educate our staff on how to respond to different situations that arise throughout the school year. The next column is specific to programs. And these programs, we have a laundry list of programs, but some of them that I'm sure you're aware of. We have Character Education Assemblies at all levels. We have Responsive Classroom, which is a program, K through five. We have Spirit Week Student Council. Again, these programs are done to not only educate the students, but bring that school culture and climate to a different level. We have Week of Respect assemblies and programs throughout our district. We have a sort of practice at the middle school level. We have SEL days, field days. And at the elementary level, this year, we have something called Morning Friends that helps support our students that might need to struggle to transition into the school or might have some issues that they need to work through to make sure that they have a successful day. So those are just some of the many programs that we have throughout our district, and I wanted to make sure that I shared with the Board of Education. So the unit of measure here is sessions? Sessions, yes. Okay, Mr. George, who are more exciting things to discuss? No, not about it. No, I'm just saying we have colorful, we have multimedia, because we have colorful pizzazz. Juju, yeah. So our standing first slide is going to be, I'm glad we have people in the audience. If you don't know already, we would love for you to attend our strategic plan meeting that's taking place on March the 12th. So I hope to see you there. If you don't know about the strategic plan process, and that's on me. But what I want to share with you is it's really important to hear from our community. Our first meeting, we had over 70 people there, and during that meeting, we spoke about the strengths of our district, but more importantly, the areas in which we want to grow. The next meeting, we are going to be speaking about what they call it hopes and dreams. So what do we want our district to look like? And the experience we want to provide to our students by the year of 2030, which is crazy to say. It's really important for us to hear from all different stakeholders in our district. We get a chance to speak to our students. We get a chance to speak to our teachers and administrators. This is an opportunity for our parents to come out. This is our opportunity for other community members that don't have students in our district to come out, and what we are able to do, which we will share on March the 12th. With the information from the first meeting, we gathered all the information, the meeting, the information from the meeting on December 16th, as well as all the survey results that we had, and all, as well as the conversations we had with our K3 students, because our students for 12th completed the survey. We gathered all that information, we started identifying themes. Things that we feel is repeated over the course of a number of different responses that we have to address and look at further in order to build our goals for our 2025-2030 strategic plan. So I ask, please spread the word. We're gonna send a reminder out with the RCP again this week, and we're hoping to have an even bigger crowd for next week. This slide represents a number of our high school students. In February, got a chance to attend the New Jersey Elks Peer Leadership Conference in Long Branch, New Jersey. Each one of the students experienced the conference in different ways, but all of them represented Mawa in an amazing fashion. Many of our students ended up on stage with different speakers or were found in the center of fun activities that were held during the nighttime. I just want to take a moment to thank the Mawa Elks, as well as the Mawa Municipal Alliance for paying for our students to attend this leadership conference. We got a chance to talk to Mr. James Dole, the Assistant Principal at the high school, who also attended this conference, and he couldn't say enough about, number one, how our students behaved and really took part in the conference, but also what they were able to take back with them, specific to leadership and all the different learnings that took place during this time. So again, thank you to Mawa Municipal Alliance, as well as the Mawa Elks for helping fund this experience for our students. This is just a picture, our student rep did a better job, so I'm not gonna say it again. This is what the gallery looks like as she shared. There's new walls, those white, those stand-up white walls, as well as pedestals. They were built by Mr. Catizone, and they were funded by the Mawa Schools Foundation. They really breathe even more life into that section of the T3 building, and we're able to showcase the wonderful work of our high school students. I don't know if she said it, but it's worth repeating. This is, did she mention the name for it? Oh, no, I was referring more towards, this is a smaller exhibit. A number of you guys have been able to come in to our art show in May. Please, once the date comes out, we'll share it with you. But we have an extensive art show in May that not only uses this space, but a number of other classrooms in the T3 building. Pardon me, that showcases a wide range of visual arts that are taking place in the T3 building. So it goes from, obviously, this section where there's paintings and sculptures and things like that, but as you move through that building, you'll see 3D designs of what our woodworking students are doing. It's a really wonderful display of the diverse experience that they're able to have in the T3 building. So again, I'll tell you when that date is in May, but I strongly suggest, encourage you to go. And Mr. Gallo, you can attest, they have snacks and drinks for all of us students while we're perusing the T3 building.
Everybody see the boat?
You will see, let's not, let's not talk about it.
Well, I haven't given Yes, but he's excited to showcase it.
This is a huge point of pride for us. Christian Maturi, he's a senior. He won the States for diving and one of only seven, I just learned this at the basketball game the other day, because they honored him at halftime. One of only seven individuals in school history to be an individual state champion. It was a huge, huge accomplishment for him. Just to get a little technical, he scored big on dives with difficulty for all the divers out there. Difficulty of 2.4 and 2.5, which is difficult. In the final two rounds, getting all sevens, 7.5s, and eights on reverse one and a half pike and a back one and a half with one and a half twists, which sounds like a lot while you're diving. He is, he is a huge point of pride for us. He actually won States by 20 points. So it's congratulations to him. He, this is something that, he is an independent diver, but he uses that Mawa name in order to compete in these different events, and he really represented Mawa very well, so congratulations to him. Again, something I was already said, but it's worth repeating. Ava talked about a point of pride. Last year, we had a number of our female wrestlers come up and talk about just the importance of the program and what that program means to them, their contributions to the program. I'm happy to report Coach Wagman has done a wonderful job expanding the numbers in that program. It's exploded. We have a large number of female wrestlers. What they, what they struggled with last year was getting in events that are female-specific events, because as of right now, the way the NJ SIA has it situated, when they wrestle and compete against other schools, it's whoever in their weight class. They really wanted to go to events that they were able to showcase their skills against other girls, and Coach Wagman was able to find these events that happen on weekends, on Sundays, these invitationals. Ava has been a wrestler with us in the years that she's been. I know that she started in the youth program, and she has had just a wonderful, wonderful year. She is, she finished third in the 32-person bracket at the Girls Regional Wrestling Tournament. She is the first female in school history to make it into the Wrestling State Championship in Atlantic City, and she will be, again, she will be competing tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock at Boardwalk Hall, which we are gonna be going down cheer on. So good luck and congratulations to Ava, and not only Ava, but the rest of our wrestlers and our female wrestlers that we have. Another accomplishment that does not happen every single year is a senior, Brian Athia, who plays on the Mawa High School Boys Team, which is playing right now in Glen Rock, scored his 1,000th point. He is the 10th male athlete and 18th overall athlete in school history to eclipse the 1,000-point mark for the Mawa High School Basketball Team. So congratulations to him, congratulations to Coach Brannick, and best of luck, which we can find out the score after the meeting is over. We can also stream it, if that's not distracting to anybody who's here.
Can you give us a shout out to the ledger?
Uh, and last but not least, let me make sure I get this the proper I just want to bring everyone's attention to, on the agenda, 19A. We have a resignation. It is for Dr. Ravino. So Dr. Ravino is leaving us. We're still trying to get through it. She is becoming the superintendent of Hoboken. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Dr. Ravino for everything she's done here in Mawa for the last 14 years. We started altogether at Joyce Kilmer, and then she went from Joyce Kilmers and AP to Betsy Ross, where she did amazing things there. And then she came to Central Office four years ago, and during her time in Central Office, she has spearheaded a large number of things, ranging from the Thunderbird Partnership Program to most recently, which we're all working on. She has done a tremendous job and done a lot with our data work, pardon me, that's happening K through 12. She is gonna be a tremendous loss instructionally, but more importantly, she will be a loss as just a wonderful leader and a person in our district. So I just want to say congratulations, you will be missed, and best of luck in Hoboken.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Jatoro. Mr. Lam, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes.
Perhaps you have a report for us this evening?
Thank you, Dr. Morty. My report this evening is the budget report. The presentation on the preliminary budget is on for the 25-26 school year. So I'll explain the process on the next slide. Tonight, we are giving a presentation focusing on the revenue side of the budget. And on tonight's agenda is approval of a preliminary budget. And after the approval of the preliminary budget, there will be two more presentations with details on appropriations and our programming on March 26th and April 9th. And then there'll be a final presentation on April 30th, and that is the official budget public hearing. And that is when the board will approve the final budget for the 25-26 school. So we're trying to have transparency and show details in steps, so we're not just giving all the information at once. So focusing on the revenues, New Jersey has a tax levy cap of 2% for school districts to increase their local tax levy. There are some waivers that allow districts to go above the 2%. The most common waivers are a health care waiver. Thank you, Dr. Jatoro. Much better. The most common health waivers are a health waiver to go above the 2%, to raise the cap above 2% in instances where the health costs are significantly higher than 2%. And then on occasion, districts will have a waiver for enrollment. If their enrollment is going up by a large amount, then they have a waiver to expand that cap as well. Another type of waiver is bank cap. If a district is below cap, they can bank that money. It's really just kind of, you basically use it as a later date. You bank the money, and if you're below 2%, then you can use that money within the next three years to go above 2%. So if you were below cap by 500,000, within the next three years, you could add that 500,000 into your tax levy in addition to the 2% and still be within the cap. For next year's budget, there's no bank cap available, but there is a health waiver adjustment available. A health waiver adjustment is available because health benefits continue to go up, although the district did change plans to a private carrier to save money this year. Next January, the state of New Jersey is expecting their state plan to go up by 14%. So that allows bank cap to be available. Excuse me, that allows a health care waiver to be available for next year's budget, even though bank cap is not available. Thank you. So the simple math is, there's a 2% tax cap. The health waiver is about $1 million, just over $1 million. That allows a district to be within cap by adding another 1.49% to the tax levy. The total tax levy would be about $73 million. And the budget is about $10 million more than that, as you'll see in subsequent slides. So a little more details on this. What is the impact of using the health waiver? Not only does it fund health benefits, so if we didn't use the health waiver, we would still have to fund health benefit increases because contractually we're obligated. But if we didn't have the health care waiver revenue, we would have to cut other programs or spending in order to balance our budget. So we're still So we're still looking at our facilities, technology, different school supplies and programs to see where can we save money, where we, where can we purchase more efficiently without curbing student programs. The health waiver will allow us a little more flexibility in that. It gives us a little bit of margin for error for increases in utilities, insurance out of district placements. A concern, the school districts, just like it is homeowners or businesses, is that with inflation, utility prices may go up significantly. Same thing with our outside of health insurance. We also have property casualty liability insurance and that also concerns about going up. Having the health waiver gives us the ability to budget a little more cautiously. And then we're able to fund our capital and maintenance reserve accounts to upkeep our buildings. And then it's kind of a, a cycle. We put money into those reserve accounts and then in this budget, we take money out of those reserve accounts to help upkeep our buildings, which you will see in some of the next slides. So how much state and federal aid we get? Again, we have a $73 million tax levy, $83 million budget. Our state aid is only about just over $5 million. So a very small portion of our budget is state aid. Semi-revenues, special education Medicaid initiative from the federal government. They actually give us this number. They told us last year that we would get about $38,000 in the current year's budget to expect. And this year, they're telling us we're going to get about $8,700 next year. That's coming from them. That's not a number that we budget. They tell us what to budget. Federal grants, we do get several hundred thousand in federal grants. Most districts that I know, it's standard practice throughout the state. Even before political climates have escalated, the districts always budget their federal grants conservatively. They're budgeting a 15% reduction to be conservative. We got over $700,000 in the current year. We're budgeting almost $600,000 next year. If we get more than that, it's good news. And the main federal grants, Title I for at-risk students, Title II for professional development, Title III for your ESL and your immigrant students. IDEA is for special education. Probably three quarters of that is for IDEA for special education. Most of that does go for out-of-district tuition. Thank you. Other revenues, I did mention this. Budgeted fund balance is surplus that we had at the end of last year's budget. We're allowed to use that in next year's budget so that we, to offset the tax levy and to not have to cut programs. Our budgeted fund balance was over $3.3 million as a revenue in the current year's budget. I've had many conversations with our superintendent, our administrative team, and our auditor and our finance committee about this, that we really want to bring that number down. It's, it's kind of like someone in their personal life. You're using savings that you've had to fund your, to pay your bills, but eventually you might run out of that savings. It's not sustainable. So we want to wean that budgeted fund balance number down to not rely on it in the budget as much. So we're reducing it by 400, almost $450,000 in next year's budget. Emergency reserve, you're allowed to use emergency reserve for either true emergencies or health benefits increases. So in addition to the healthcare waiver, we're withdrawing $200,000 from the emergency reserve to fund part of the health benefits increase. Maintenance reserve, we're withdrawing $300,000 in maintenance reserve to fund some of our maintenance costs. Capital reserve is outside of the operating budget, but we still have to approve it. And capital reserve is for capital projects. The two capital projects that this $800,000 will cover would be a walk-in freezer at the high school cafeteria kitchen along with roofing and the JK rooftop unit. Just to note, there are other Rod Graham projects out there that we hope to and we plan on doing within the next couple of years. And if we are ready to do those projects during next year or start them even at the end of June 2026 into the next year, at any time, the Board of Education can, will vote to withdraw more money from capital reserve to fund any other projects. So this is just the minimum. This is really, we know we're going to do these projects this summer, so that's why they're in the budget. And any future plans we can add in later. Unemployment account, that was another revenue that we had to plug a hole in our budget, but it's probably not sustainable long-term every year. So we're, we're not withdrawing money from our unemployment account this year in our budget. We still have a balance in there, but we don't want to rely on it too much. So the purpose of that last page was just to show that we are trying to use our other revenue sources and not just only rely on the tax levy to fund the budget. And this is a summary of the different lines that I talked about. You see some of the lines have a positive increase and those lines that we're trying to wean down, you see decreases in it. So overall, our, our budget is not increasing by a high amount when you take all the pluses and minuses collectively. And then the rest of the budget calendar, again, just repeating, tonight focused on the revenues. March 26th, planning on explaining special education benefits operations. April 9th, enrollment personnel, capital outlay in the capital projects. And a final summary and board approval of the final budget on April 30th. So thank you for the time. And I just want to thank, it's been a pleasure working with our administration on the budget. It's been a pleasure working with the Finance and Facilities Committee and the full board on this process. And thank you to the business office staff for all their help as well. And are there any questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lam, for that detailed presentation. And it's actually very helpful to see the numbers and see where we are. Thank you for the hard work of the Arts and Facilities Committee and yourself and your team. All right. Dr. Fair, our Assistant Superintendent's report.
Hello.
Hello.
I do have a report this evening.
Do you have a report this evening?
I sure do. Some really awesome news to celebrate with the board and our few guests. Last week, our Mawa High School Girls bowling team competed and won the 2025 Patriot Division Championship. So congratulations to our high school girls and congratulations to Coach DeLusio, who is there on the right of the picture. If you've ever, we probably haven't heard of straw bees. So this is Theo. He is a student of ours in our Gift and Talented Program over at GW. He, he's here using straw bees, which are building materials, to construct a mechanical crane as part of our program study of simple machine. So this is an image of Theo and his crane creation. After building and testing, Theo applied his skills in division as they studied mechanical advantage. The class then worked on practicing their math skills through extension activities related to their build. So really great things happening in our Gift and Talented Program. I'll touch on a few other things later in my report. Our community problem solvers at the high school. They just completed an awesome children's book as one of the solutions to this year's project. The title is The Adventures of Bergen the Bear. Students self-published the book and it's available on Amazon as an ebook. Just to give you a little context related to the problem. Mawa, New Jersey is known for its vast woodlands and parks and has seen a sharp rise in black bear encounters due to habitat destruction and an increasing bear population, which has risen 80% since 2018. Bears are now present in all 21 New Jersey counties and frequently appear in residential areas, leading to safety concerns. Reports of bear sightings and incidents, including school closures, vehicle collisions, and aggressive encounters have surged. Surveys indicate that most residents and students lack proper knowledge of bear safety. In response, The Adventures of Bergen the Bear aims to educate the public on how to handle bear encounters and reduce risks in the community. So you'll see that we have our two students who are authors and we have one student who made all of the beautiful illustrations in the book.
And just so you know, it's only a dollar 99. So it's a steal?
It's quite a steal.
So we strongly encourage you to consider it.
And if any of you have encountered a bear, like these things do work. The strategy is in the book. Like, I've grown a bit more encounters, so I know.
What do we have in the video with you guys role-playing the safety precautions?
Oh, maybe. Maybe that will be a future.
Next slide, next year. I mean, that stuff is needing a lot of slide. I'll dress up as a bear.
All right, so we had the really great opportunity to witness a Mawa High School graduate come back and present to our fifth graders over at JK. Here's Kristin Nolan, who also happens to be the daughter of one of our fifth grade teachers. She's from the class of 2007. And she participated in our Thunderbird Partnership Program. Christie is the Senior Vice President of Growth at Influential. She focused her presentation to our fifth graders on how Mawa schools prepared her to do her present job that was now in existence when she was in high school and college. She discussed what the creator economy is and how our world is ever-evolving due to technological advances and social media. So the kids were captivated. They had some really great questions. Christie did a really nice job of sharing kind of what she does, what it's going to look like in the future and how Mawa played a part and who she is professionally today, which was really nice. We have law fair competition winners for our Project Challenge students in sixth grade. We have Alexander Buchanan Kenechi, Jack Charles Fine, Stanley Chen, Aaron Hung, Arav Metta, Christian Ohantian, Colin Tarzian, and Audrey Tremblay. Congratulations to all of them for their success in mock trial. There were 68 submissions in the New Jersey State Bar Foundation Law Fair Competition this year. And this Ridge team's case fire insurance fiasco earned first place in their division. Every year, Rampou Ridge Project Challenge students engage in this law fair competition whose purpose is to promote understanding of the law and our justice system and to educate students about their rights and responsibilities under the law. So students use their analytical thinking and to develop an outstanding legal case. So congratulations to our winners. I know that there have been many emails that have gone out and I thought that this would be a good opportunity to throw out another plug for one last push for tickets for our Harlem Wizards game this upcoming Saturday, March 8th, at 6:00 PM at Rampou Ridge Middle School. Tickets can be purchased online and all profits go to support the class of 2025's project graduation. And just to echo some wonderful words about our colleague, Dr. Ravino, you will be missed. It's interesting because we've been talking about this resignation for a while because we knew that she was leaving. And it just dawned on me that your name was there and it's actually real. So we miss you. We've loved working with you and I consider you not only a colleague but a friend. So best of luck and I'm sure you will be calling us for help.
I will.
We can vote it now.
I was gonna say, you didn't vote yet.
This is like a foregone.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything left for you?
I, I think there's very little to say. I think I found it appalling. Well, I, because I haven't been invited to the presentations yet. Yeah, the planning part. I'm waiting for my invitation to the planning parties because all of you know I'm technologically challenged. There will be no slides in my presentation. All right, so a few things. First of all, Ramadan Mubarak to our Muslim community who is celebrating this month. I also, we can talk about our top soaring thunderbirds. So that's all me. I get to actually share something. So for February, here we go. Our top soaring thunderbirds, there's a student chosen and then a faculty member. So the student is Tracy Palacunel, who's a 12th grader. And the attribute is for being determined. And for our teacher, it is Mr. Matthew Domville. He's a biology special education teacher and he's also quite determined. So that's the attribute. Now, I don't think we actually talked about January, so maybe I can go back. And our January top, we need photos. I'm going to have to send this to you in advance. Our top soaring thunderbirds in January are, our student was Marissa Jansen, who's a junior for being inspiring. And our teacher is Mr. Jason Naham, our theater teacher, for being trusted. And just a reminder, the T-Bird pillars, everyone, are T for trusted, B for brave, I for inspiring, R for resilient, D for determined, and S for spirited. So those are the attributes. The other thing is I just wanted to highlight about the strategic planning meeting next week that Dr. Dettore spoke about. One thing I just want to share is that you don't have to attend all three or if you didn't attend the first one, you feel like, okay, I missed out. No, each one sort of focuses on its own theme. This one is dare to dream. So think about things that you would like or envision for our district and expectations for the future. It's really one of those opportunities for our larger community, but also our parent community to get involved and to have, have a say. What you said is what we listened to the first time in creating the strategic plan. And that has been the guiding sort of principles for our district. So what you say counts and I just want to reiterate that. So please sign up. I think something will go out again. Please register so we know who else is coming and we look forward to seeing you next week. Lastly, our best wishes to all our winter sport. I mean, it's just, it's tremendous. I was actually at the girls' basketball game last week and they, they trounced the other team. We don't even need to mention the team because they did a great job. Anyway, it's tremendous. Our DECA students, our robotics, our winter guard. Again, it's, it's just amazing what our students do in this district and all opportunities that there are. So thank you to everyone and good luck. All right, Board of Committee reports. We're quiet tonight. All right, let's move on. Board member remarks, additional comments? Okay, and I, I feel like, I'm not saying goodbye yet to Dr. Ravino. That, we've got, we've got her till June, okay? So, and, and we haven't voted. I may abstain in the voting. It's, it's possible. It's very possible. So we're gonna, we're gonna share all the good things for you, but congratulations to you. It will be a tremendous loss. In fact, my daughter started in the district with Dr. Ravino. And Rhea is now 23 and in medical school. So thank you. Well, started with Dr. Dettore. And that was your all's first year together in the district as principal, vice principal. And Rhea entered fourth grade and had a tremendous experience. So anyway, but we're, we're not, I'm not doing it today. Not doing it, Dr. Ravino. All right. Let's take old business 17, A and B. I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Ting Jansen. Roll call, please, Mr. Lam.
Ms. Abinero.
Christine.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski's name.
Dr. Morty.
Yes. All right, let's take 18 new business, 18A through M. Motion on the floor, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Denise. We need a roll call, please, Mr. Lam.
Ms. Abinero.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes, I would also like to thank Superintendent for giving back two days. The student let me get them.
Ooh.
Yes.
Ooh.
Not a word, not a word.
And Dr. Morty.
All right, and now let's take 19 new business personnel. All right, and now let's take 19, new business personnel. Let's take 19A to BB. Motion, please, Mr. Kismarski, seconded by Mr. Gallo.
19, Ms. Abinero.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you to the parent volunteers and the adjutant.
Thank you. Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Mort.
Yes. All right, public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Fila 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness. You're asked to limit your questions to no more than one, and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. Motion to open the meeting to the public, Ms. Ting Jansen and Mr. DeSilva. We are officially open to the public.
Sorry, I got up here a little too soon.
That's okay, you're good.
So I'm just gonna ask, can I have an extra two minutes? We'll try and make it to three minutes, but I don't think there's a lot here, so.
We appreciate the request. We just need a name at least.
Sure. My name is Zizah Rachel, and my address is Tenonino Place.
Thank you.
So I'm here today as a parent who is deeply alarmed by the recent events involving some threatening text messages exchanged by fifth-grade students at our JK school. I already discussed my concern with Dr. Tettoro. Thank you for that. But I felt the need to stand in front of the board so you can see my face and my concern, and share with you that I am still alarmed. And I also want to be able to tell my boys and look them in the face that I've done everything I can to ensure their safety and the safety of the kids that they call friends. The text messages, and I won't say names, but these read in part, student's name, "I have a gun, right? And shoot up the school. For real, for real." You wanted it pointed out your head? "Ha ha, so funny. Your mom would never let you touch it." Also, "Do you really think that your mom will let you shoot?" Student's name, "An assault rifle." Were characterized by an email sent out at 4:00 PM on January 24th by Dr. Bowie as not a safety issue specific to the school. And while an investigation was undertaken, and I am, of course, extremely thankful and grateful for the quick actions of the school, and of course, our Mawa Police Department, I am a little concerned by the lack of meaningful consequences that these students received, and the perceived lack of meaningful consequences that the rest of the students see in the We are all parents. We know kids do stupid things. We know that kids will humble us on a daily basis. But we also know that we can't dismiss threats like this as harmless. We can't tell our kids that there are no consequences for saying alarming things. As a mother of two boys, I can tell you that my son has been disciplined with detention by JK for far less than the gravity of what occurred here. And I'm here to remind you that what might seem harmless to some can be the very beginning of something much worse. We've seen tragic patterns too many times in schools across the United States. In Parkland, shooters troubling behaviors were ignored for years, and 17 lives were lost. In Newtown, 26 innocent lives were lost. In Uvalde, we witnessed again tragedy. 21 innocent people were lost, 19 of them children. So my question is really, how many more signs do we need until we take some action? Where are we setting the example of accountability of safety and responsibility for our kids? We do not want to ignore these behaviors. That doesn't make them go away. It doesn't make them okay. It actually emboldens them. So I'm asking to take action, enforce meaningful consequences for actions that are threatening. Kids need to be told, this is not okay, and other kids need to see that action is being taken, or otherwise you lose credibility when you enforce disciplinary actions for other things. Do not allow a dismissive attitude to create a future where we will regret inaction, because our kids deserve better. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just pronounce your last name again? Grajal. Grajal. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Grajal. And Dr. Dettore, did you want to respond? I can just say to you that, you know, the district followed our protocol in appropriately addressing the situation. It took place outside of school grounds, and the incident was referred to appropriate police for investigation that was conducted. And unfortunately, we're not at liberty to discuss any of the specifics of the situation. I appreciate you not saying names in particular and maintaining confidentiality, and we have to maintain that with respect to the individuals involved. I'm not even sure that some of us board members have even seen those text messages, so.
Well, I can assure you that many parents have seen them.
Oh, and I.
It doesn't excuse us that there is.
I'm sure.
The mother of one of those students sitting here on the board today.
Well, first of all, let me jump in here. We're not, we are not going to start talking about any identifiers about the incident, so let me go back to the conversation that we had, the two of us. There are some things that were said that I really, I don't want to go back and forth with specifics, but I just want to make sure, because this is in public, I want to make sure that the public hears the conversation that we had. I'm glad that you acknowledged the fact that when you, when you and I spoke, I spoke about the lengthy process that we took in this specific situation. We didn't dismiss it, and we didn't take it lightly, and when we connect these things to Parkland, which is so significant, I don't want to leave it there, because the fact of the matter is, is to give everyone as much context as I can, this incident happened at night between some students. I don't take that lightly at all. Unfortunately, it did become a school matter, because there was a reference, somebody made reference to a school. So we did make it a point to say, we're not going to say, well, that happened outside of school, we're not going to handle it. We said, we're going to do everything we can within our threat assessment protocol, which we discussed, and we engaged all the appropriate authorities, which did not happen in some of the cases that you're referring to. So we made it a point to not only investigate internally, we engaged the police, we did our threat assessments, not only internally, but external assessments are also done. And we also made it a point to alert not only the families of the people who were involved, but we wanted to make sure that we were as transparent as humanly possible to the grade that in which it occurred. I do understand as a parent, no matter what, so let's be very clear. When you get a letter like that, there's a lot of questions. And I understand the frustration that could come up, because that search for clarity and that search for more information, and you're not able to get as much as you, that you're searching for, aside from the consequences, which we can talk about that at a different time, along lines of the purpose and worth of those. In this type of situation, the biggest value is the investigation, the assessment of, is this, are these individuals a threat to themselves or to others? All of those things were done to the letter, specific to our threat assessment protocol, and all authorities and individuals needed to be brought into this event, we're brought, we're brought into the event. So I don't take this lightly at all, I can assure you, but I also don't want to let things linger or let them be out there that it was ever dismissed. Things like this are not dismissed, and I want our community to know that we take these things very seriously, and as much as I can provide, I will provide to the community, because I don't want them to feel like this is something that, oh, kids are going to be kids. At no point do we ever take it that way. So I do want you to leave with not only our conversation you had over the phone, but also leave with the understanding that at no point do these things ever get dismissed.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that thorough response. I think that my search for clarity, again, has to do with the fact of the, of consequences like things like detention, suspension. If someone says this, I don't know what the, when does, when does some action that is, you know, deemed wrong rise to the level of suspension or detention in the school? Because as I mentioned, you know, my kids are not perfect. No kids are perfect. They have had detention for far less. And so when these things happen, and other students in, in the school see that, hey, you know, these kids don't, they're here, they weren't, they don't have detention, they're sitting right next to me, what message do we tell those kids? What am I supposed to tell my son?
The fact of the matter is, is you tell your son that, or daughter, whoever it is, that the school takes these things seriously, and it's not about the visual consequence that addresses the matter. And I know that that's hard for a young child to see or to understand, but it's not about, we're going to showcase what the consequence is to the public. And that's not a part of the measures that need to be taken in this type of situation. So I can't get into it any further than that. But I understand that conversation and the difficulty of that conversation of, well, I need to see what's taking place. The conversation is, I spoke to the school, I spoke to the superintendent, they don't take it lightly. It's not about if you see them in a detention hall, or if you see them, whatever, whatever consequence you're gonna, we can decide. It's not about that. It's about how it's handled. And with these types of situations, things are handled outside of what even the kids see.
And as I noted before, confidentiality of these sort of student matters is utmost paramount, and I actually thanked you for maintaining confidentiality. And then you chose to bring up something else related to that. So again, I implore you that there are board members here who have students in the district, who've had students in the district before, and again, matters related to individual students are not something that we are privy to discuss, so we thank you for your comments, and we appreciate it. But again, we really have to maintain the utmost of confidentiality for a parent in this district, for any parent.
Absolutely.
Including the board members sitting here on the stage tonight.
Yes, absolutely. That's why I didn't say the name.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to stand here in front of you.
All right, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, and seconded by Mr. Kismarski. All right, we do not need an executive session at the end, so motion to adjourn, Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Kismarski. Thank you, everyone. Good night. Well, I, hold on.
You win.
Couldn't win.